It's a great day in Kershaw County. It's a great day in this all-American county. And it's also a great day for our ponytails who took the South Carolina State National, it's now, South Carolina championship. Welcome you all. We have a quorum. Everyone is present. And with that, we are called to order and I ask Dave Snodgrass to lead us in the invocation and the pleasure of allegiance. Would you please stand?
Let's pray. Father, we come to you this evening and we're thankful, Lord, thankful for the ability to be here and to be a part of this assembly here. Lord, I'm thankful to be a part of this, this country in which we enjoy freedoms. Lord, to peacefully assemble and, Lord, to conduct government business in this manner. And, Lord, to come and to voice our opinions, to have the freedom of speech. Lord, not everyone is able to enjoy these freedoms. And, Lord, we know that these freedoms come directly from you. And we're also thankful for the individuals who have fought for those freedoms as a part of our, our military. And, Lord, we pray for them. But we pray for our, our, those who wear the uniform here locally, those of a law enforcement officer, or a first responder, or detention center officer, Lord, or a fireman. We pray that you would place a hedge protection around them as they serve this great county. Lord, I pray that you'd be with us in these moments as we conduct the business of this county. We love you. Praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend David. If you keep that up, we're gonna make you our permanent preacher up here. I think I need to come to your church on Sunday. Thank you. We're called to order. Thank you, David. The time now for public comments. I ask Mr. DeBeauz to take us through this. How many do we have signed up tonight?
Mr. Chairman, we have seven, well, we have six people signed up. One scratch their name. And so, six, it all gets five minutes each. The first one is Ben Tobin.
Say again the last name?
Tobin, T-O-B-I-N.
Mr. Tobin, please come up. And as you do so, I want to remind you all that these are to hear, designed to hear from you. There's no question and answer back and forth. And I ask you to retain the, the quorum of this body so that information may be handled by the government bodies before you. And, and also, in around five minutes, we'll give you a notice when your time's up. Sir, please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for having me in the front. First, I'd like to make my announcement.
Is that microphone working?
Oh.
Yeah, bring it over where you can talk to it. Yeah, thank you.
All right. I got additional two minutes on that.
All right.
My announcement goes to those who provided me the information for mailing, to those who personally respond to my request, and to the editor who decided to print my newsletter. The matter of consolidating Sheriff's Department with Detention Center opens up questions we need to ask and being informed with the questions that one needs to be aware of. Our citizens needs the opportunity to address this matter in which county council meeting is not formatted for discussion. Briefly, some of these questions. Using the detention facility for training purposes for deputies that survive for position. In these two institutions, there's different types of field exposure. Danger of personal and attitude singularity that will transcend from one place to the other. Certification process. Are these recruits recruiting from another department? If so, why? Is it open for public review? Background checks, as well as you check the individual backgrounds, region of origin past and present is being vetted for contemptuous way of thinking towards diversity and social status. That needs to be looked at also. Training staff. Singularity pipeline is a danger to diversification towards mental, cultural, and personal attitudes. Once again, regional origin. What is the fail-safe policy? Paper versus reality? How deep is the bureaucratic process? I'm asking the county council to table the request for immersion until there's a town hall meeting consisting of broad panels and setting a format for question and possible answers. Sessions with no individual group, great, I'm sorry, with no individual that attempt to have a gripe session, or no group that attempt to have a gripe session. Be done in orderly fashion. In closing, you cannot know the answer until the questions are understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. Pass it to the clerk and she will give it to us. Thank you, sir.
The next person to sign up is H.L. Brown.
Mr. Brown.
My concerns are dealing with the sheriff taking control over the detention center as well as the sheriff's department. My concerns is those are both important positions. And with him holding two positions like that, will he be able to really focus on each, 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 each part of his job? So I would just like to just say, ask, for me being a citizen, that placing that many positions on one person is a little too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. DeBeauz?
The next person signed up is Wesley Corley. Corey?
Corey, sorry. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And it is not a great day in Kershaw County. Y'all recklessly took money for projects and wasted it on an underwater park. You could've used it for fire protection, but you didn't do it. Also, you wasted money on some kind of pad. You wasted money on some kind of barn. And yes, Mr. Sheriff Lee Bone can handle two jobs. And I can tell you why. I met the man. I know the man. And he knows me. Furthermore, as far as the detention center, when I was brought up, the sheriff was over the detention center and the sheriff's department. And that ain't but one county over. And if the sheriff, I know this man here can handle probably more than two jobs. But the reason y'all don't want him to have it is because y'all got your hands in it. They call me a liar. That's right. Now, I want to know another thing. I got a 20-year-old truck. Why y'all gonna charge me $108 to pay taxes with 150 miles on it? That's outrageous. Lee County, same truck, $36.38. Y'all ought to be ashamed of yourselves. Folks, they ain't doing nothing but taking your money and putting it right here. I know where you putting it. Because all these projects you built, I'm assuming always your buddies, they gave you kickbacks. I know how the game's played. And you can look at me any way you want to. I ain't scared, I'm crazy, and people know I am. But I'm gonna tell you this. It's a shame that y'all treat the disabled and the elderly the way you do. That's a pitiful shame. You're gonna charge a man, probably, he got a half acre of land, he probably ain't, he's in an accident, and y'all gonna charge him taxes, raise his taxes? Y'all are disgrace. Y'all need to be replaced with a reputable people that know what they're doing, such as engineers, common people that's lived in the world. But y'all don't see that. All y'all see is dollar signs. Well, the dollar signs is gonna stop. I'm gonna tell you that now. Because we gonna vote you out. And if these people agree with me, I'm happy. If they don't, I'm happy. But we gonna vote you out. I promise you that.
Thank you, sir.
Ain't nobody here, ain't nobody here, but that man standing right there, Judge, uh, Mr. Bone, I told that man I'd whip him in his sheriff's department. And me and him, we talked it out. That's how two men talk things out. That's how people communicate. Y'all don't communicate with you publicly. Y'all leave us in the dark. Well, we ain't in the dark no more. We've, we can see the light. And we can see your pockets filling up too. Thank y'all. Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DeBeauz?
Next person signed up is Sheriff Lee Bone.
Uh, Sheriff.
Always a pleasure to talk to my favorite county council in all of Kershaw County. Over the past two months, I've personally, and this is about the jail, over the past two months, I've personally talked with each one of you. Each one of you have my cellphone, my email address. Each one of you's reached out and done a lot of research. This is a very serious topic. I want to thank every one of you for doing it. That's what I wanted from the beginning, is to do some serious research and make the best decision for Kershaw County. I'm the elected chief law enforcement officer in Kershaw County. People put me where I'm at. Running the jail is a law enforcement function. I'm also a member of the South Carolina Sheriff's Association. Since 75% of the sheriffs in South Carolina run their jails, the South Carolina Sheriff's Association is the largest network of jail administrators in South Carolina. Sumpert County Sheriff Anthony Dennis, president of the South Carolina Sheriff's Association, which is the largest association of jail administrators in South Carolina, spoke in favor of the sheriff having the jail in Kershaw County during my presentation last month. Councilman Jimmy Jones, which is the only council member with jail administrative experience, is in favor. I think of him as the subject matter expert when it comes to running jails since he's run Kershaw County Jail. He's in favor of this, this merger. I'm still convinced tonight, as much as I was two months ago, that merging the sheriff's office and the detention center is what's in the best interest of Kershaw County. I think the timing is perfect now. But I'm not gonna take up any more time representing the issue tonight. I'm sure you're all prepared and, I'm sure you all prepared yourselves to make an informed decision tonight, and I'm gonna trust your decision. As I said from the beginning, this is not a fight between the sheriff and council. All this is, is a discussion on what's in the best interest of Kershaw County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you very much indeed.
The next person to sign up is Fielding Pringle.
Ms. Pringle.
Good evening. Chairman Burns, members of council.
Let's, I need to get the microphone over to you again.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Burns, members of council. My name is Fielding Pringle, and I'm the circuit defender for the Fifth Judicial Circuit, which means I'm your public defender here in Kershaw County. I came and spoke to you guys last month. I don't think everyone was here, but I was able to address council. And I apologize if I'm repeating myself, or if you see me glancing down at my phone. I'm not checking my text messages. I have my timer on so I can monitor my time. Don't go over. But I did want to come here and just share with you again my opposition and request that you retain control of the jail. As I said last time, I've met the sheriff, and there is nothing personal about this request whatsoever. It has nothing to do with not wanting Sheriff Bone to be in charge of the jail in particular. It is a much more, a larger concern and a more long-term concern, really. He is, seems like a lovely person, and I, and I do believe that he has the best of intentions. I just don't happen to think it's a good idea. I have been a lawyer since 1996. Most of that time, I have been a public defender, spent a large amount of that time in Richland County as a public defender, and took over the circuit defender position last year from Mr. Strickler, who I believe you, some of you may remember. I can just tell you, in my time practicing law, I have practiced all over the state. I know attorneys locally, attorneys all over the state, who have come to Kershaw County. I have been in jails, detention centers, all over this state. I know lawyers who have spent time in jails all over this state and have spent time in this jail. And while I, I recognize that there are issues at times, jails are going to have issues. But this jail is run very, very well, and it has a very good reputation among attorneys, among families of inmates, among defendants, among the people that have to go in and work in the jail on a regular basis from the legal community. It is known for treating inmates and family members and lawyers and our staff with respect, dignity, humanity, courtesy, responsiveness. I've never reached out to them when I have not gotten a response or an issue addressed that we needed to get addressed. There are very few arise, and we've had very few problems, really whatsoever, in my, my time here. I spent a lot of time at the jail some years ago prepping for a death penalty trial. And I just can't tell you, but how detailed and careful and cautious they are to tend to attorney-client confidentiality, to attend to security and safety. And it is, it is a unique place, and it is being run, in my opinion, and in the opinion of many, many others, very, very well. As I said to you last time, and I say this with my whole heart, the safety and security aspect of the jail, I think I have as much vested interest in that as any law enforcement member, any law enforcement community. Because my, not just my clients are in there, but my lawyers are in there every day. I have four lawyers who are public defenders here, who are in that detention center every day. I'm in there. My clients are in there. And so their safety and security is just as much my interest as it is law enforcement. Finally, I think you really do need to be concerned about the difference in these two jobs. Being a correctional officer, being a law enforcement deputy, and what they're talking about is a brand-new deputy, so using this as a training facility, those are very different jobs. And a correctional officer has a duty to ensure that the inmates are safely housed and protected and kept secure in the jail from the community. And they have the duty to ensure the protection of their constitutional rights. People that work for the sheriff, they have some of those obligations, but their job is evidence gathering, prosecution, arrest for criminality. And when you take both of those and you blend them into one job, I think you end up with a real divided sense of loyalty and a potential conflict of interest. Because their loyalty would and should be to the sheriff. And it's, it's just very different. I do see that I'm running out of time, and I thank you so much for hearing me out and taking the time to consider this. I do think that you're doing an excellent job and would ask that you retain control of the jail.
Thank you very much indeed for making that long journey. I appreciate it. Mr. DeBeauz?
Mr. Chairman, the last person that signed up is Tom Webb III.
Mr. Webb.
What I'm going to say won't have much meaning to most people. I'll keep it real short. Country's in terrible tension, and I think we need to be careful not to alienate people. There was a choice I was called on to make among some of the associates, some of the people that we know for a committee. And I didn't feel that I had everything I needed to make a really wise decision, so I flipped a coin, and I probably hurt some people's feelings. But I want to defend that, it's called casting lots, that when you are pressed to do something sometimes, the way to resolve it is to flip a coin. It's very biblical. It goes way back to the Eurim and Thurman of the Old Testament, when the priest would take these objects and use them to arrive at a conclusion, and lives actually depended on it. When the 11 disciples that were left after, after Jesus was crucified, Matthias was picked to fill then for the 12th spot by Lotz. So flipping a coin is not necessarily very flippant. It's a way to, to achieve a certainty of what you're going to do, and also to dispel any of the, the egos that might get involved when people are gonna argue over this or that and who wins the argument. If you just flip a coin, that takes the egos and the pressure out of it. Anyway, I did this, and I've probably hurt some feelings, so I'm taking this opportunity to explain it. And I thank you very much. Got any questions? Ask me.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, and thanks for your service on the Clean Community Committee. Mr. DeBeauz?
That concludes the sign-up list.
All right. With that, we move to the adoption of the agenda. Do you have that up on the board yet?
Mr. Chairman.
Hang on a second. Yeah, please, Mr. Bozard.
Counsel what I'm saying. Get it. Never mind.
Mr. Boz, you wanted to say something about the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, yes. On the agenda, I believe you are, have a consideration under number seven, new business, cancellation of November 22nd, November 26th council meetings. Those are the second meetings of each month. Previously, on a preliminary agenda discussion, you indicated you wished to add cancellation of September 24th meeting. At that time, I indicated I had a time-sensitive matter, but that time-sensitive matter no longer exists. Now, Mr. Chairman, by way of explanation, in the event council should wish to cancel the second meeting in September, the question is, how is that exigent in August? Well, it becomes exigent in August if council wishes to do it, because you need certainty in scheduling, particularly for public hearings. Public hearings, as you know, are scheduled in advance, advertised in advance. Chronicle Independent has deadlines for advertising. I can see the clerk indicating. So if council has any inclination to also cancel the second meeting in September, it would be my request that they do so now, so that we will have certainty in advertising for public hearings, on my behalf and on behalf of the clerks.
All right. In other words, the Bethune item at tab B is not time-sensitive.
It is not.
And so I'll exercise my prerogative and say, I want to put it back what it was in the original draft of the agenda on item number seven under new business for discussion later on. We can decide later, but we need to put it back on the agenda. That it should read, instead of cancellation of October 22nd, it would read, in addition, cancellation of 24 September, comma, October 22nd. Can we have a second to that?
Second.
A second from Mr. Bozard, discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. I guess I have a question. I mean, I just, I'm seeing this for the first time. We've canceled two meetings that I did not support, July and August. And now we're gonna cancel a meeting in October, November, and September?
Well, potentially. You'd have to vote on it, Mr. Jones.
Have to vote on it.
And the motion would have to pass.
I see, that's what the motion, I mean, that's the amendment on the table.
Yes, that's the motion, yes.
I can't support that. You know, folks, we ran to serve. We, we meet twice a month, and I think that's what we ought to do. And I think, and I do appreciate, Mr. Boz, you bringing up time-sensitive issues. Take, for example, what we're discussing tonight, employees' benefits, the jail, those are very important issues, but we've had to postpone those and kind of wait till we had another meeting. So I certainly will not support that, and I would be surprised if majority of my colleagues did.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion on the amendment to the agenda. Yeah, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I think the record would reflect that the county attorney and the clerk to council have indicated that if council's going to do it, they need to do it now, because that is exigent. We need to know.
We, we got that. Thank you. We'll get to it later on.
Can you restate the motion?
The motion is amend item number seven on new business to read from cancellation of Oc, of October 22nd to be amended to add 24 September as well. So September, October, November. So there'll be one meeting a month, once we get to that item, number seven, if we decide to vote in that direction. Okay? So that's the amendment, and we'll vote on it up or down when we get to it. All right.
We got a motion on the floor, don't we, sir?
That's the motion I made.
Okay. And has it been seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
So we need to take a vote.
That's correct. And we have a discussion. Mr. Jones, any other discussion? Seeing there is none, let's move to a vote to amend the agenda as stated. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Conell. Those opposed to the amendment, Mr. Snodgrass and Mr. Jones, the motion carries and the motion, and the agenda is amended. Mr. Bozard, do you have an amendment?
Yes, please. Under old business, the extension of the water lines at Dobin Mills and up Highway 5, I need to take that off, because the information that I was looking for did not come back to me in time to discuss it.
Can we have a second? Second, Mr. Conell, let's second. Any discussion? All right, we'll pick that up at a future date. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary, and so amended. We move now to the next item, which is approval of minutes. It should be up on your board, and it should be...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the amended agenda.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Now, we have the amendment made. Now, can we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended on item number seven? Mr. Tucker?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
A second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Conell, Mr. Bozard, Burns, and Gardner. All those opposed, Mr. Jones. It passes six to one. We move now to approval of minutes at tab A. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Gardner, thank you. A second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bozard. Any discussion?
Mr.?
Yeah.
I you.
Point of order, I'm gonna abstain from voting due to my absence of travel.
Correct.
Ditto.
All right. So we had two absent. Any further discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor of the minutes, please signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous with Mr. Snodgrass and Tucker abstaining. Okay, we move now to the first item on the agenda thereafter, which is ordinance, first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of Bethune Rural Water Company at tab B. Okay, Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce it? And perhaps we'll get into an explanation later, once we get it on the floor. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this is an ordinance that allows the transfer of property owned by Kershaw County to the Bethune Rural Water Company.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve this ordinance?
Make the motion we approve this ordinance, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. A second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. Ken, can you take us through it a little bit, please?
Mr. Chairman, yes. In 1980, Kershaw County apparently facilitated a grant from the Farmers Home Administration to allow the construction of a water tank and water lines to be used by the Bethune Rural Water Company, which Bethune Rural Water Company has used since that date, has maintained since that date. And this merely authorizes Kershaw County to convey it back to them 39 years later, because we don't, Kershaw County, I don't think, council has to make this determination, but Kershaw County doesn't operate it, doesn't maintain it, has nothing to do with it, except they own it. And it's leased to Bethune Rural Water Company now. So we want to convey it to them so they can own it.
Thank you. Discussion. It's pretty straightforward to me, and there's being no discussion. We'll move quickly to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary, and moves on to a second reading later in September. We'll move now to old business. The first item on there after the deletion of the water line issue is item number two, restoration of retirement benefits. There's some data on tab C and also on the board. Some of that may be new to you and may require some explanation. Do we have a motion on this? Mr. Jones, I believe this is your item.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I so move, but I want to state my motion this way. I move that Kershaw County Retirement Benefit Plan be amended so as to return all employees that were on the payroll January 10, 2011, to the retirement plan that was in effect at that time, thus grandfathering those employees to be covered by the old 50-50 plan should they successfully retire from Kershaw County. This change will not affect any employees hired after January 10, 2011. They are covered by the current $300 slash a month plan already in effect. They were hired at that position and with that understanding. This will not cover, also, this will not cover these qualified employees once they reach age 65. At that point, those retirees would be covered by Medicare and the $300 a month plan that is currently in effect. Thank you.
Do you have a hard copy for the rest of us? Maybe we can ask the clerk, so we can see it.
I don't think, no, I don't have another copy. I don't think, no, I don't have another copy for you all.
We could get it at Xerox.
Absolutely, you can get it.
All right. Let's get a second and maybe have that done. Can we have a second, please?
I'm going to second for discussion.
Okay, a second for discussion. Mary, can, Danny, can you perhaps make a copy of that? With that, Mr. Jones, you led off, would you like to discuss it a little bit?
Sure, I would. All right, y'all need to listen, please, okay? The cost for the yearly, I think the yearly cost for the year's cost for the current retirees that are on board now, I think we have, what is it, 26?
It's $23,400.
No, I know it's $23,000, but current, is it 18, 20?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, it's 17 currently retired now, that would be $23,000 more. The cost to cover the length of the restored benefits that I mentioned would be, for the employees that are still working, but they were hired prior to January 10, 2011, would be $330,000. And, but that's, that is a very hard number. It would, bottom line is, that probably wouldn't be the amount, it'd probably be a lot less, because that's assuming that the current covered employees to retire and live a healthy life, and that's just not realistic. You know, some may not retire, some may not make it to retirement, some may retire and only be around for a year, some may live a full, healthy life to 100, we just don't know, but this is taking a worst-case scenario, based on the information that I got from administration, and of course, you know, always, as we've done in the past, in the future, that Kershaw County finds they cannot afford this change, they can always go back, as they've done in the past, and amend the budget again. But I want to say this, Kershaw County can't afford this, we can't afford it. Mr. Carpenter, I'm going to ask you your opinion, can we afford this?
I can find the money within the budget, if council requests, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So we can afford this, and I think it's little money out of a budget of 28 million, and this little bit of money will go a long ways to do the right thing, and I just appreciate that, and I have some other, I'm sure there's going to be some questions directed at me, if I can't answer, if I don't have the right answer, I get Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Bozard's pitch in, but I look forward to the dialogue.
We have a chart on the board, and out of fairness to all councilmen, may not have a chance to see it, can I ask Mr. Carpenter to talk about what that chart says?
Um, yes, sir, the chart that's currently in front refers to the individuals that are currently retired from Kershaw County that were affected by the change in retirement programs in January of 2011, 17 individuals. That is the increase in the OPEB. OPEB is the other post-employment benefits, that's an accounting term, it's used to reflect the implied and incurred cost of, to the citizens of Kershaw County, for, in this particular case, changing the plan. So, the book value, we're required to put it in our financial statements, would increase by approximately $1.5 million to the long-term liabilities the county has to book as a debt to the county.
So, total debt goes up $1.5 million.
Well, not debt in the sense of bond payments and things like that, it's not that kind of debt, but it's our book liability, our assets and our liabilities, yes, sir.
Just to further Jimmy's presentation, is there another chart or two that talks to this, or is this the one you wanted to show?
Um, there's, yes, sir, there are other ones up there as well that show, when Mr. Jones referred to the cost of grandfathering employees, this refers to that cost right there, the grandfathered employees, a total of 82 employees currently working for this county were also working when the plan change was made. Of those 82, 53 of them have single coverage, 23 have coverage with their spouse, 6 of them are not covered by the county. So a total of 76 employees, as Mr. Jones indicated, I can't tell you what the cost would be tomorrow, or a year from now, or two years from now for those employees, but the cost to the county if they all retired would be an additional $336,000 a year.
Mr. Jones got his number?
Yes, sir, you got that for me, yes, sir.
Everybody tracking so far? All right, and there's another chart too, I thought. Okay, we'll try to read that.
That's just the current, those are the 17 individuals that are currently retired under, that were affected by the change in plans in January of 2011. So since January 2011, we've had 17 employees retire that are covered by some form of retiree coverage, and the cost for those 17 would be an additional $23,000 a year to move them back to the old plan.
That pretty well states the case, Jimmy.
It does.
So the 82 plus the 17 adds up to about a third of a million dollars in cost, and a $1.5 million, I guess you'd call that liability against the audit of Gatsby, is that how that's read?
Long-term.
Yes, it's liability, and if council wishes to delve into the accounting aspect, we have Mark Quigley here who can answer those questions. I'm not an accountant, so I don't want to mislead council by representing myself as one, standard disclaimer there, but the $1.5 million was based on the 17, that is not the cost of the 76 as well. That would be an additional cost on top of that, that again, it's not, Mark can explain better how that affects us, but we have to book it in our books every year, bond rating agencies generally look at that when they look at our books, to understand what our long-term liabilities are.
Without entree, is it okay? If we bring Mr. Quigley forward, he's our wonderful CPA, you're gonna, it's before income tax, I normally don't like to see the CPA until then. Thanks for coming, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Your increased cost on your OPEB liability, if y'all remember, that's on your 34 statements, and so it lists all your liabilities of the county. Right now, your OPEB liability is about $6.3 million. If you factor in these additional 76 people, it goes to about $9 million. So you're looking at about, right now, that $1.5 only represents the 17 people that retired between January 11 and June 30 of 2019, but you can't just carve those people out, the change is to include an additional 83 people, so when you factor that in, your liability increases not from $1.5, but to $2.7 million. So that $2.7 million would be an additional liability that would be recorded on to the county's books, meaning that's an additional liability, that if everybody in the county retired today, your liability would be about $9 million of insurance proceeds, insurance policies that you'd have to pay out.
And that factors in business as what we know as risk, does that impact our bond ratings and things of that nature?
It hasn't yet, but you never know when it could. You know, that's along with, you know, you've also got the retirement, the pension liabilities on your books now too, and that continues to go up as well, and so at some point in time, these bond rating agencies, and everybody's got them, so you're not in a boat alone, but that was one of the reasons why the ordinance was passed, and it was done, the way it was done was to try to help control some of the costs for this OPEB, because this, we knew this was coming, I had talked to council about, hey guys, you need to make sure that y'all understand this OPEB liability is coming. That was why the decision was made back then, was to try to control some of that cost so the liability wasn't such an enormous amount. And so, I just want to make sure everybody understands, that's the route that council wants to go, there's some things that you've got to consider with, not only additional premium costs that you're going to be paying out each year, which would be cash flow, you've got an increased liability that's going to be on your books, which could, may or may not, impact your bond rating.
Just one more point, and I think this teases out the issues for Mr. Jones. Mr. Conell and I, and Mr. Snodgrass and Mr. Tucker attended a conference last week, and they had the likes of the, Mr. Merle Smith and a few other of our legislators at the State House, and you remember, two or three years ago, when the pension funds and all that began to fail, they decided that each year they would increase the amount that the counties paid, and so is this, and it will happen again next year. So the compensation pension and all that sort of thing is increasingly being laid on the shoulders of the counties. Is that in the same genre of what you're talking about, Mark?
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Snodgrass.
Mr. Quigley, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Were you, were you our accountant when this was, these changes were made?
I was the auditor when the changes were made.
Auditor, change, because I thought I heard you say something in your statement, that you said, because of the OPEB, that's why you advised them of this, how this is going to change, and that's why they...
Yeah, I advised council.
You advised.
When the change, I knew when the change was coming, and this has been phased in a couple of different things. So when it first came in, you basically took your OPEB liability, and it was divvied out over 30 years, so you only recognized about 1/30 of it.
Right.
Two years ago, they just said, no, you're going to book the whole liability, and so when this was getting ready to hit back in the 11 year, which would have been 11, 12 audit, we had told council the year before, don't need to look at this, because this is coming, we had advised all of our clients, that, you know, you need to look at your retirement benefits for health insurance, because this liability is coming, and you need to plan accordingly. We didn't certainly say you had to change the plan.
Sure, yeah, I'm not trying to...
Hey guys, make sure you look at this, because we had some counties, they were paying 100%, and you want to talk about an astronomical liability, they were getting ready to book, it was incredible. And so, yeah, we had advised, we had informed council at that point in time, hey, these changes are coming, you need to look at your plan. Council did, at that point in time, they decided to change to what the plan is currently, that the people that had retired January of 11 would be grandfathered in, anybody retired after that, it would be $300 a month.
So there was no...
Would you repeat that one time, please? Repeat what you just said.
Those that had retired before January of 2011 were grandfathered into the plan.
Not current employees, those who had retired.
Current employees just had retired, so anybody that had not retired by that date, fell under the 300, they fell under the new plan at $300 a month.
Well, that's exactly what I said.
Okay, thank you, go ahead and go ahead.
But we're talking about grandfathering people who were...
Y'all are now talking about grandfathering people in that were employed at that date, not that retired at that date.
All right.
We've got two, yes, two separate issues.
Yeah, thank you, Jimmy, this, I think this is really helpful, Al, please.
Yeah.
Okay, go down.
Not 11, but right now, today, people retiring right now, today, you have any figures for that? I'm not worried about retroactive, I'm talking about from this point forward.
Under what, under what plan? The old plan or the new plan?
The new plan.
The plan that exists as of right now?
Yes.
If you retire right now, under the plan that's there, you get paid, you get $300
Right.
A month. And so your OPEB liability under that scenario is about $6.3 million.
Other discussion?
Probably have some discussion, but we won't need to have Mark up here.
Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
If you don't mind staying, because what you're saying now is different from what I understood then, I want to make a couple points, and it came from the previous administrator. We, Councilman Gardner looked at me just now like deer in headlights, were under the understanding that it was everybody who was employed that's...
Talking to your mic.
That's going to retire out of the system, not who had retired by 2011. So that's why this came back up, because we've got these 17 employees that are having some difficulties maintaining their health insurance through the county, that has given their adult life to the county in serving. So I think there was either some bad misunderstanding, I'm not blaming you at all, let me say that first and foremost.
No, I understand.
But I also know what was said, not with you, but privately in other conversations, not to throw anybody under the bus. There's a couple things that I wanted to just go over. First, Mr. Carpenter, the $336,000, what you going to cut out the budget? Because when we did the budget, I didn't remember that being fluff. Who's going to get hurt?
Well, and again, I'm not saying that that's, would be a cost that we would actually incur, unless every single employee was able to retire all at once. That's the potential cost that they all did retire at once. Obviously, Mr. Tucker, I'd make it work, but it wouldn't be pretty.
So that's number one of my concerns. The, is this Gatsby 45 we're talking about?
This is Gatsby, this is the old Gatsby 45, yes.
Yeah, because that's what it was back then.
It's now Gatsby 75.
Okay, I'm just upping the numbers, huh? To what you just said about our bond rating and our ability to borrow money, just went to that class as the chairman spoke about this week, this past week at the conference, and yes, your lenders are looking at what your liabilities and what your Gatsby 45, 75 is, and they're rating you and loaning you accordingly. I mean, I sat in that class with the chairman, and I think Ben was in there, and Vic, and so it does, and that's where I'm having a little heartburn on trying to do all of it, Mr. Jones, versus trying to do the $23,000 where the 17 employees are already retired, and then let's address the other 76, 72, 72, 76, whatever the number is, in our next budget cycle, so we can address the liability part. Now, I know we say that it's 1.5, but that's not 1.5 cash, that's a liability and a paper number, but, you know, worst-case scenario, if something happens, and everybody decides to leave, it could be a possible liability. So with that being said, what I would like to offer, Mr. Chairman, is an amendment to the motion.
Let me ask you a question. So you would do it for some, but not for all?
I would do it for the ones who are currently retired, so you can't pick winners and losers, that's what you're trying to do. I'm doing it for the ones who are currently addressing that issue. I'm separating out what is present and what is future.
Yeah, I think...
I would just caution you, one thing, and I'm not a legal expert by any means, you need to make sure that you're able to do that, because that could be construed as a discriminatory plan.
That's my point.
And I'm not sure that you're able to do that.
Yeah, I think, Mark, you're getting to my point, you've got 17, then you've got 82, I think that's the numbers, but you've got a large number of people that are not being treated equitably, and you're setting yourself up for either a complaint now, or a future budget, you might as well vote for it now, or decide to take it up, and what I was talking to Jimmy about earlier at coffee, is, is we are now out of the recession, you know, and maybe there is an opportunity for us at a later time, but that's not the motion in front of us, there's an opportunity during the much next budget cycle to do the whole thing, but that's not the motion before us, but do you want to make the motion or...
Yes, yes, sir, I do, but let me, let me address what you just said. We just picked who was retired in 2011, and who wasn't, to cover our liabilities, so did you not discriminate against the ones that were not eligible for retirement, or not ready to retire at that time? I'm only following what we just did eight, nine years ago.
Yeah, but at that point in time, it was everybody that retired, and so you'd made the motion, you had made the change, so everybody else, I'm not saying you can't do it, I'm just saying you need to look at it, because, let's say, for instance, this, let's say that somebody was, could have retired, they were before retirement age, so they knew, once the new law had passed, they were going to have only $300. Let's say they were under family, and they would have to pay out an additional $700 for retirement, and they decided not to do it, or they're in the same position now. So if you only carve it out for 17 people, you could have the possibility of saying, somebody come back and say, well, wait a second, now, I could have retired, and I chose not to, because I knew what the cost was going to be of my increased insurance, you could have a situation where they would file some kind of complaint. I'm just saying, just make sure that that's taken under advisement. I'm just saying, just make sure that that's taken under advisement, because I'd hate for that situation to come up.
And I, and I appreciate your, your concern on that, and I don't have a problem having the administrator to, to do some, some legal research, research with our county attorney, but there too, I just go back to their, to their not retired, and then I didn't say we're not going to address it, I'm just blocking off how we're doing it.
You're taking steps.
And I think that it's the most prudent thing to do so we can cover that liability piece by piece without upsetting the whole apple cart of the budget. And that's my reason behind it, not to discriminate against anybody or leave anybody out, and I most definitely don't pick winners and losers, because I think the person that does that is the loser. I, I truly believe that. Let me say this too, because I'm real busy when I go to these conferences. Florence County right down the road pays 90%. All I'm trying to do and other council members up here is to go back to a 50/50, which is equitable to help these, and this is not any dependents, this is our employees, who we don't always pay the best wages to try to help them when they can live a decent life and take care of their medical needs. So that's what my passion is, and I just want to state my amendment, Mr. Chairman, if I could, that we, I make a motion that we approve the $23,416.80 of cost for the 17 employees that's currently retired as of 2011.
Mr. Tucker, excuse me, here's a question, but don't you want to include those that have retired subsequent to January 10th, 2011, and prior to some date? You have more retirees than that number.
Any retiree prior to January 10th was already covered by the plan we're discussing.
Right.
So they're not affected, it's...
So he wants to add a new date? What's the new date?
But what he's asking is those employees who retired between the dates of January 10th, 2011, and June 30th, 2019.
Right.
That's what I was looking for, June 30th, 2019.
Okay, you want the closing date?
Yes.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
June 30th what?
2019.
And that, how, is how many people?
17.
Those individuals that we've...
So would be that, so your increased liability would be the 1.5 million dollars?
That's, the cost there is, the liability, not the cost, is, is 1.5.
Do we know, want to get a second on the motion? Or continue amendment?
Can we have a second on that?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Jones seconds it. Further discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Jimmy?
Just give me a chance to bring a solution there, because I'm really good about bringing solutions to the table. We talked about our, our liability and the $9 million. You know, you guys had no problem in doing a 17.2 million dollar bond for economic development that's going to be a $30 million payback in 30 years, which has accomplished nothing in economic development, nothing. And you know, we talked about the $23,000, where are we going to find it? Well, you know, we were talking about painting water tanks at the last meeting, that was going to run maybe close to $70,000 or $80,000, but everybody was excited about that.
Not true.
Said, Mr. Conell, I do stand corrected on that. But anyway, I'm just, Mr. Tucker, I appreciate your hard work, I appreciate the amendment, I'm going to support the amendment. Listen, we promised, you can ask any employee that's here, they were told that they would be grandfathered in, and they found out they weren't. And I just think that, and I was told that by the current administration, I'm, I'm going to get to you in a minute. So I know, I know it's going to come up where you dropped the ball, Jimmy Jones, because you didn't get it in writing. No, we're going to drop the ball if we don't do something tonight that we know about.
Uh, Mr. Conell.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
I will...
Thank you.
I hear you're on the same, same line, so go ahead.
Well, I just want, you know, just for transparency, make it clear, crystal clear, there's not a one of us up here this affects. Not a one of us, not one council member sitting up here that this affects. So I'm not doing this for me, and I have zero relatives work for the county. So I'm not doing this for my family. I'm doing this because it's the right thing to do, and we can do it, and we had already thought we had done it. So I'm trying to make good on what I thought was already in place.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Conell? So, for me, this comes down to a matter of statutory construction. I can't support Mr. Jones' motion or the amendment for multiple reasons, but I'll name the ones that stick out to me the most. So if you look back at the actual law, which is really all I can work off of instead of someone told me, or this is what I understood at the time, I've tortured the statutory language in the code and the benefits manual with our county attorney trying to interpret it any other way that I could that would line up with what's been suggested tonight, but I can't do it, and that's the law. We have had instances up here on the council in my short time up here where there's been proposed language in what the law would be, and the discussion that we've had over 15, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, or an hour, did not line up, our understanding did not line up with what was in the printed word on the page, which is what matters when this body acts as a majority and votes on it to codify something or make it the law of this county. And we've corrected that. There was a time, I remember with the shipping container ordinance, we were talking about various issues, we had a understanding, but the language did not reflect it, and we had to call it out and change the language on the page. Unfortunately, back in 2010, it looks like the language did not reflect exactly what the intent was, and, you know, that is unfortunate. I think we are in a better position in the county right now to be able to better compensate on the retirement side for elective healthcare benefits our employees. That can help attract people, it can help attract probably a little bit older talent, people who are more seasoned or interested in some of those benefits a little bit more than new hires. With that said, and I'd like to see us do it, increase those benefits for people who are currently retired, I can't go back nine years, almost a decade, and try to retroactively correct language that this doesn't line up with anything that I've heard tonight, and I've tried to read it every way I could to interpret it that way, and in good faith, I just can't.
Mr. Snodgrass?
I yield.
Yeah, Tom?
I just, I support the amendment, because I believe we need, we need to make these 17 people whole to what they thought they were getting. But at the same time, whether it's voted up or down, we need to address it during the budget in the spring when we go into the next budget session, and we need to address it for all of our employees. This fixes these 17 in this amendment, but I think that we need to address, whatever, it may, it may stay at $300, and we may go to 500, we may do whatever, but come budget discussions in the spring, this needs to be addressed because we need to take care of our employees. This was done at a time when the recession was here, it was a financial decision as much as anything else. Climate, economic climate is better now, and I think we're in better shape to do something. So come budget time this spring, I, I want to make sure that we do address this. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Snodgrass?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, echo some comments that have already been said, but this, man, this, this really, this is a tough issue, and it's, it tears me up, because when I look at the spreadsheets, there are faces behind those numbers, and, and, and I hate, I hate the situation that, that we have placed ourselves in. However, I mean, as much as I want to, to do, I, it's, it's, it's a scary practice of, of kind of making this type of, type of correction, and, and for me, I wasn't here. And so for me, this date of 2000, you know, January 10 of 2011, to me, that's an arbitrary date, a while, and, and I feel for, you know, the, the employees who are, who are working here and are working here now, so, and, and the other thing that I caught is I've, I mean, I've poured through this, I've poured through this agenda for hours, trying to find any, any way. Not only was this read three times, three readings, this has been revised, it's in the agenda packet, this has been revised in 2011 and also 2012. Now, it wasn't revised for the issue of retirement, but it was revised, the, the whole document was revised for bereavement policy and I think something else. So it's, this document has crossed this desk many times, and, and I think those would have been the moments to, to, to catch this, and I, I, I really, I, I hate that I'm saying that, because there, I, I have nothing but respect on all, all these gentlemen up here, and they, all of us want to do what's best for Kershaw County, and especially for the employees of Kershaw County. And, and I think we've just heard, and I know this isn't court of law testimony, but we've heard from our accountant who was here, that, that what, what is written, what was written, was what was understood, and, you know, so I won't, I won't be able to support this as much as, as much as I want to. The print, my, the principle of the matter just won't allow me now, when it comes time for budget, man, let's, let's look at this. I think we're in a great, I think we're in a great spot to look at this and, and make some, some drastic changes, and, and, and that's the appropriate time to do it, and, and I'm, I'm all in at that point, but I'm just a little fearful of, you know, I'm a little fearful of, of what the precedent that this might set if, if we would, if we would go this, this route. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bozart?
The people that work for Kershaw County is paramount for me. I agree that they need to be taken care of, which I'm going to try to do in every best I can. I also agree with Mr. Gardner that this needs to be tabled for tonight and come back up in budget session.
Point of order, we didn't use the word tabled.
No, he didn't say that.
We got an amendment.
I'm saying that in my motion.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm not making that motion. But the people, like I said, are paramount that works for this county, and I want to do everything I can for them, but I need some time to think about it, and I think if we can put this thing off, and coming up in budget year, we'll be better off for everybody else, including employees, and that's who I'm after. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Tucker, if you can wrap it up, we'll move to a vote.
Yes, sir, and I'm ready for a vote. I just want to make it clear to Mr. Bozart, the only way you're going to get this table if you're going to amend the amendment, and we've, we've done the amendment and the second and the discussion, so it's either going to get voted up or voted down in just a few minutes, so it's not time to, to have more time, because that's going to run out. And, and I just want to say to my colleagues, I'm a bit set back with a couple of you, because I know the feels that you're in, you act like you never had to rectify something before. Know you weren't here when it happened, but does that stop you from doing what's right? We all make mistakes, overlook things, things pass across this desk. We're not the perfect soldiers up here that we want to think we are sometimes, things happen. But is that a reason not to? I mean, if they didn't correct some of the things that went on the judicial system, everybody would be sitting on death row or being hung or being slaughtered or whatever you want to call it, because when they found out that they were innocent, they refused to go back and do what's right. So I, I respect your position, I don't know too much if I agree with your reason.
Okay, Mr. Jones, can you wrap it up as having made your motion?
I will. Mr. Tucker, I agree with everything you said, I, I did not make a mistake. I know what I was told, I know what was put before me, and, and the employees were, were told this, you can go talk to a former clerk, clerk of court, and some other folks, and they'll tell you that they told their employees that they better be glad they were hired prior to, because they're, they're going to be grandfathered in. So somewhere, things slipped by, you know, and during a budget process, that has happened, but I can assure you this, there's no misunderstanding on my part as to what I thought was supposed to be. And Mr. Bozart, I would like to say this, you do want to do the right thing for the employees, we need your vote tonight, and I'm going to support you, Mr. Tucker, and I hope we get four votes to do that, because you're doing the right thing, and I agree with you on that. Thank you.
Very good, I'm ready to call a question. I want to first thank Mr. Quigley, I'd much rather hear you...
Mr. Chairman, that was, I introduced him incorrectly, Mark Wood.
Mark, I mean, Mark, thank you.
And I take, I'm...
It's, it's not a problem.
Uh, Mark, I'm sorry, Mr. Wood. Yeah, thank you.
He's Quigley now.
He's Quigley now, forever. Thank you, Mark Wood. Thank you very much. Let me just ask you one question.
Sure.
Do you like your job?
Oh, I love it.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
If I didn't love it, I wouldn't be here tonight.
And you can see that these seven men up here love this county.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, y'all, y'all've got a hard decision to make, and I, you know, I feel bad that if it was construed to members of council in a way that maybe it wasn't written up, I mean, I, I feel bad for that, and, but I know y'all, y'all make the right decision, and it's not an easy decision.
Yeah.
But I just want to make, you know, they asked me to come here so everybody knew...
Yes.
What the potential issues were for your financial statements, so with that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Quigley.
And I do have a short statement is, a retroactive action like this is, is very dangerous, and we've heard the financial liability piece that starts us down a road. One step taken means we got to take the next step and the next, and rather it be taken deliberately as a part of the budget process, and that's my, where I'm headed. So with that, uh, we have...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, since you made that statement, would you allow Mr. Bozart to make his statement?
Did you have another one?
He did, but you didn't, he wasn't recognized.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I just wanted to say that I do agree with Mr. Tucker down there, and I do support that motion.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we have a motion to amend it. Would you please state it again, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. The motion is that we approve the 23,416.80 for the 50/50 plan, starting from January 2011 to June 30th, 2019, for the 17 retired employees.
Retired during that time?
I said retired, yeah, during that time.
Let me ask you this, once we do the 17, should we not also do the 82?
We will get there, we will get there.
So we're going to do, we're going to assume that additional liability when we go through. So essentially, we're down the path for increasing our liability by several million dollars. Is that what you're voting on? I just got to make sure I understand.
It's not several, 1.5, several's...
The discussion's continuing.
On this one, but in effect, we move into a liability where 17 people have it, and then the other 82, is that correct, Mr. Carpenter? So if, if, if Mr. Tucker's intent is that in January, you're going to bring us a budget, is that what you want to have Mr. Carpenter to do, bring in a budget that assumes this additional liability?
I, I want him to bring it to the workshop so we can figure out which way we need to go to best limit as much as our liability is possible to include these other 75 people that we have that are in our system. Yes, sir.
Is it 75 or is it 82?
76.
Well, it's 76 that right now would be covered from the current coverage they have.
Okay, and so that's what we're going to do, is ask him to increase that, or should he come back in with a judgment that says, we can't afford that 17?
Mr. Chairman, his motion states what he wants, with all due respect.
I'm sorry, I'm leading this discussion, Mr. Jones.
I understand, but we're going to have discussion too.
I want to understand the liability that we just heard from...
Well, we're going to all have discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, I recognize you.
You're quite welcome, sir.
But I'm asking a question to someone else. Mr. Quigley, now Mr. Wood, said that we would assume a greater liability, and we are backdooring by a series of steps without having looked at the entire thing. I'm looking at you, and I'm telling you, this is a risky approach.
Incorrect. And I don't, and I don't know how many times...
So you're going to do one, and you're going to do them all?
I don't know how many times I'm going to tell you, this is the path and the step that I want to, I want to go tonight, and I will, I will rest assured, between our administrator and this council, we will look and choose the best paths moving forward. I have confidence in this staff and confidence in this council that we would do that, and we will vet it and do our due diligence.
Tell me about this. You heard it, I heard it, that the legislature is going to impose at least another $380,000 or more on this PIBA approach to get the state retirement fund sorted out. And on top of that, we have now taken a step where these wonderful 17 people, and I know some of them too, and I've talked to them, and I don't know them all, but I know some of them, and the point is, let me ask the question, what we're doing is we're taking a step that I would suggest to you is irrevocable, is irrevocable, you're gone down the path, or you must have the administrator come in and say, we couldn't afford that 17 because we can't afford every member of this, of our workforce.
I don't know what he's going to come in with, Mr. Chairman, first of all.
Yes, for sure.
But I'm, I'm willing to, to, to listen and, and what he recommends, and don't confuse the monies, the PIBA money is real money as far as... The PIBA money is real money as far as what we have to do according to the General Assembly. This is, this is book money, paper money, on, it's, it's liability. It's not physical money that we raise taxes or move from our account. I don't want the people to get confused because you're up here trying to muddy the water.
Thank you.
Because it's two separate things. Heck, we can't even control the local government fund. We don't know what that is gonna be year to year. And they keep saying they're gonna do X, Y, and Z.
Well, do you deny-
We have no control over them.
Mr. Tucker, do you deny the point that if you've done it for seventeen, you gotta do it for the others?
I am very interested and gonna do my best. I will not make a promise tonight what will happen because I don't have that crystal ball sitting up here. But I'm gonna do everything I can to do due diligence.
Then let me ask Mr. Jones. Why did you bring in the entire package tonight instead of the, the seventeen only?
Because I wanted the entire package to pass. And I would have supported the entire package. I would support it right now. And I support Mr. Tucker right now. I'm not gonna get weak kneed and change my vote. I stand firm in the way I feel.
I see.
Thank you.
Does anybody need any further discussion of the liability? Mr. Connell has his hand up.
Um, it's interesting when folks invoke, do the right thing. We have, we've all researched the issue and we have our own opinion about what's right or wrong. Um, in my view, the right thing is not to expose the overall taxpayers and voters in Kershaw County to additional liability. It's not just about the funds necessarily, not just about the money, but it's a policy matter in that if we do this, if, if the majority of the council does this, we'll be creating a precedent that says effectively, "Well, in spite of what the law is, in spite of what the words on the page are, ten years ago, I heard something different." So from ten years ago to now, how many different ordinances have been passed? How many different budgets have been approved? How many other non-related to, uh, retirement benefit issues have come up where somebody can now say, "Well, you remember what you did last year with, uh, or recently with retirement benefits?" In spite of the actual law, uh, what we understood is what controlled. Um, and unfortunately, some people perhaps misunderstood. I mean, I, it's just a dangerous precedent that I don't think we should have to deal with on this council, future councils, or the taxpayers should have to look at that slippery slope. But I do agree that we can do, I mean, I, I'm ready to take care of these folks, the seventeen, all of them, and those who would retire in the future, next budget cycle and increase it substantially. But I don't think we should, uh, hang on our hat what, what was understood over ten years ago and has come across this desk multiple times, uh, because it just sets a dangerous precedent on weakening the rule of law in Kershaw County.
Yeah. Mr. Bozard?
I'd like, Mr. Carpenter, would you mind telling us what you think about this whole thing? You're the administrator. I know you wasn't here when this started.
Asking what they did with their employees, where they came from.
I'm talking to Mr. Carpenter.
Excuse me, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, as, as I've already said, Mr. Bozard, the council, that if council chooses to, um, go with the amended version, um, we can fine twenty-three thousand dollars in the current budget. That's something which we can do. I would say, um, a little clarification, Mr. Tucker, that is real money. Um, that, that's not the OPEB. Um, so that, that is money that would come from some line item. Um, it's a difficult situation in the sense that the decision was made by county council and that decision has stood for nine years. To go back and reopen a decision from nine years ago raises the potential of other issues being reopened and discussed that is, is a Pandora's box. There are a number of decisions that have been made over the years by, by numerous councils going back forty years. And the precedent has always been, to my knowledge, that previous council's decisions were adhered to. Uh, the current council can make decisions going, would make decisions going forward and change policies. So to answer your question, I'm not gonna tell you my opinion of it, Mr. Bozard. Um, I, I will always stand up for the employees of this county. I think a retirement plan, uh, pay plans that are, um, are good is something that helps us as a community. And I want my, my employees and the employees of, of Kershaw County to receive, uh, retirement plans, pension plans, and, and payroll that is, is fair and is competitive for them. Um, so I support employees being taken care of. But I would say that I think that in looking at how you take care of your employees, um, I just caution you in, in the middle of the year, changing longstanding policies, um, that previous councils have made.
Thank you.
All right. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of what he told and so forth and this other information that's come forward, Mr. Tucker, I, I can't support-
Jesus.
Okay. We move now to votes. Mr. Tucker, all those in favor of the amendment Mr. Tucker made, please signify by raising your hand. Uh, that's Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, and Mr. Jones. All those opposed, so signify. Mr. Connell, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Snotgrass, uh, the motion fails. We move now to the main amendment, which is stated in hard copy, uh, which goes to the retirement plan that was in effect at the time, that employees be covered by the fifty-fifty plan, which would include hired after January twenty-eleven, uh, and then it goes on to the age sixty-five. Um, well, Jimmy, do you want to restate it in a simple form?
I do not. I don't think I need to restate my motion. It's on the table. Let's vote.
Very good. All those in favor of Mr. Jones' motion, signify by raising your hand. Mr. Jones, and the motion, and all those opposed, signify by raising your hand, opposed, signify by raising your hand.
I don't know what I'm-
Point of order, please restate.
Okay. Say again?
What, what, what was the motion?
Well, your amendment fails, so now we-
Okay, well, okay.
Mr. Jones' motion.
All right, got you.
So back to that. Uh, Mr. Jones has already voted against it and in favor of, all those opposed to-
Voted in favor of.
In favor of, excuse it. Uh, the, all those opposed to Mr. Jones' motion, signify by raising your hand. And it's Mr. Connell, Mr. Bozard, Mr. Burns, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Tucker, and Mr. Snotgrass, and the motion fails. So we, we move on now to the next item on the agenda, if I can catch up. And thank you, uh, Mr. Quigley Wood. Thank you very much. The second item is new business, is item number one, transfer of the detention center to the sheriff's office. It said Tab D. Is that up on the screen? Yeah, very good. Mr. Jones, this is yours to enter, please.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. I would like to make the motion to get this on the floor for discussion and vote, that we transfer the, which it'll have to be done, I think, ordinance in three readings.
Yes.
But that I make the motion that we do that to get things rolling, to transfer the responsibility of the detention center to the sheriff.
Uh, can we have a second?
Second. For the second discussion.
A second came from, you David, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yep. From Mr. Snotgrass. Mr. Jones, you want to open it up?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. Um, it has the sheriff set up here that he, he's not in a fight with county council. He's made a request. He feels that he is the best qualified, most qualified to run the detention centers, as most sheriffs do within, uh, South Carolina, I believe. I believe it's about seventy-five percent now. He also mentioned that Sheriff Dennis Anthony of Sumter County, who they, they have their jail, and he's president of the Sheriff's Association, came and spoke on that behalf as well. And, um, you know, we've had two months since we've looked at this issue. I know there's been a couple of meetings council, but we've had two months and I would like, I've heard a couple of you reached out to him, but I, I don't think all of you have, and, and that's a little bit disappointing on that. But, um, he's not asking for any additional funds to run the jail. He's saying, "I want to come in here, I want to make it better and run it with the existing monies that are on hand." You know, if this thing doesn't work out, and there comes time we want him to run the jail, he may want more money to do it. But that's certainly not the case at this time. Right now, our current jail is under the, the fire service. And, uh, you know, when you look at the benefits of recruitment and retention, you know, I know that was brought up tonight by a couple of folks, you know, for non-certified patrol deputies to be hired, you know, from the jail that gives them that experience. I've done both. I've been on the, I've been on the receiving end, I've been on the, uh, offensive end. I, I've worked as a law enforcement officer, I've worked as a detention center administrator. And, uh, they're, they're, they are different, but it's law enforcement. And as I said earlier, that's what sheriffs do. You know, you talk about consolidation of resources, and I'm just rehashing some of the things that the sheriff has already said within his presentation a while back. You know, with the command staff, transportation, court and government, uh, government center security and training, those things would be a tremendous benefit. Um, I think it's a win-win for Kershaw County. I support this. And I know that it had came up, this was, I've been on county council thirteen years, it came up one time in my second term, I also supported it at that time too, but it was voted down. But I would like to really encourage my colleagues to think about this and, um, let's move this forward tonight because it's gonna take, as I said, three readings to do it. But, um, thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Um, Snotgrass?
Yeah, this was kind of an interesting, uh, situation. I, I second it because I believe in the process and I believe, uh, it's important to have this discussion. And, you know, Mr. Jones had, had called me early on and said, "This is, this is what I feel like I'm wanting to do, you know, will you help me get on the floor?" And, uh, at the time, I said, "Well, I can't. I, I can't make any promises of how I'm gonna go either way, but, you know, I, I have a lot of respect for you. I know you work hard and, and I'll help you get on the floor." But, um, you know, checks and balances is a term that we know well. Uh, it's, it's ingrained in us, uh, from the beginning of our ninth grade civics, civics class. It's just kind of a balance of how our, our government works. And, and so we, we know that a government works when we have a healthy system of checks and balances. And so the issue of Sheriff Bone running the jail is, is not, has nothing to do with the person Lee Bone. And I, I think that's very important for us to have, when we have this discussion, uh, that everybody in this room understands that, uh, that Lee Bone is an outstanding human being. He's an outstanding man, uh, and it, it does a phenomenal job running the, the Kershaw County Sheriff's Office. And I have no doubt that Mr. But Mr. Sheriff Bone would, would, would do a fantastic job at running the detention center. However, I, I think it's, I think it's important to have checks and balances. I think it is, I think when you look at these two departments, the sheriff's department and the detention, and the detention center, these are two departments that are well-respected, not only in our region, but well-respected in our, in our state. And I think a part of that has to do with, both of them are single-minded focused on, on, on their respective missions. Uh, just, you know, the sheriff's department is able to singly focus on the mission of law enforcement in our county. The detention center and their staff are singly focused on the importance of, of, of housing those who have, have been arrested, uh, who are, who are, who are awaiting adjudication, uh, to house them safely and effectively. And so tonight, it's, it's easy to put a person with a policy. It's easy to say, "Well, I like Lee. I've been, I think Lee, Lee's the guy." And, but we have to remember that tonight is not about Lee Bone. It's about, it's about changing policy in our county, that a long-term policy in our county of checks and balances of their, of their being this, of this, of this separation. And so, you know, as, as I look at that tonight, um, I, I was able to give you the second, but I'm still, I'm, I'm open to seeing how this is gonna play out as we, as we go through our, our conversation. The things, also things I think about is, uh, the current law enforcement climate, uh, that's in our country is under a microscope. And I, I wouldn't want to do anything, uh, to our sheriff's office that would, that might would put them even under more of a microscope, you know, by, by being not only the arresting officer, but also being the ones who, who house them. So I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a worthy discussion to be had. Uh, I think the good news is, either way this vote goes, Kershaw County wins because we've got great center at the, at the detention center who will continue to do a great job. And we've got a, we've got a great sheriff. Uh, but I think for me, it comes down, as, as I, as this, this conversation plays out, uh, for me, I, I'm looking at, are there, are there issues, are there, is there a reason significant enough to change standing policy in our county?
Other comments?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Jones, please, sir.
I disagree with what you just said, Mr. Snotgrass, totally. Absolutely, absolutely. You know, and this will draw more comments, I'm sure. But, um, I've been involved in local government, been involved in local government for quite a while with my time on county council and then my time as the jail administrator, director of special services, probably total of about thirty-eight years. Sheriffs run jails, that's what they do. You talk about checks and balances. I, I tell you right now, uh, working for a sheriff is checks and balances because I've worked for a sheriff before. Working for a county administrator is checks and balances. They are there, no matter who runs the jail. You know, we talk about, well, what if we get a, a different sheriff in than Sheriff Lee Bone? Well, what if we get a different county administrator in? What if, what if we get, get different county council members? I mean, that's just the way things work out. There's gonna always be somebody replacing everybody in life. But I, I'm a firm believer that, you know, it, it was mentioned about, well, it's too large of a budget to combine both budgets. You know, you got the sheriff's department at, what, five something million, then you've got the, uh, recreation department at two point four million. I mean, you've got large budgets in the county. And we are, I think, what, twenty-eight million total? So it's not gonna give the sheriff a majority. I, I mean, uh, we still have the majority of the, uh, well, we have all the budget control, but it, it's just, to me, it just makes sense to do that. And, and, you know, I've knocked this around, I've knocked it around and, uh, for the past ten years. And, uh, I've always supported the sheriffs when they came before us requesting to jail. And, you know, the jail was, uh, I think turned over to the county in nineteen eighty-eight because they couldn't get the funding for it. This man right here has come in and taken the sheriff's department, asked for no additional funds from the taxpayers. He's, and yet he's taken it and he's filled, I think, about every position he's got, which is, hasn't been done for the last five years. There were many, many vacancies. But he's been able to take and reorganize and use monies on hand and not ask for any additional money from the taxpayers. And he's doing the same thing tonight with the jail. I think the sheriff has the right to have the jail, if that's what he wants.
Thank you.
I'm not through. Please, thank you. I'm not through.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm just catching my breath. I really hope somebody will reconsider and, uh, vote to make this transfer possible. I think Sheriff Bone has done everything he can possibly do to show us that, um, he's willing to make every effort possible to, to run this county with the least amount of additional funds as possible. And I think this would really, I, I don't know how many, how many openings does, did y'all have any openings now? Do you know, do y'all have any openings?
Yes, sir. There's a couple openings.
How many?
Is it four?
Okay.
Two.
Okay, two, but it has been as high as, what, five, six?
It fluctuates.
I can tell you now, when it comes to recruitment, and when it comes to retention to sheriff, I feel, I feel my opinion would do a much better job at that, and, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
I would just make sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Snodgrass.
I would say, I agree with everything you said about, about Lee Bone over there. I agree with everything that you said about his effectiveness as a leader, and his ability to come in and run the department, his Sheriff's Department extremely well. My point is, I'm separating that in this discussion, I'm looking at, is there a circumstance, is there a situation at our detention center that would precipitate this need? And as I look at the staff, and as I look at our detention center, I'm just not seeing that there's a circumstance that requires, that requires us, and that's all I'm saying. And I'm just, I'm just making it clear that as I've moved through this, as I've moved through this issue, I've tried to, I've separated the person from, from the office. And I'm not worried about who's the next sheriff's gonna be, because I, the voters of Kershaw County do a great job at electing sheriffs. I don't have any doubt about that. For me, it's just, it's just the policy, and just, I think our detention center stands on its own merit.
Other comments? Yeah, I'm sorry, Tom, Mr. Gardner.
Yeah, I've, you know, I've thought long and hard, and I, you know, had a nice meeting for about an hour and a half with Sheriff Bone, and my decision's not based on Sheriff Bone or anything else. I look at this as, you know, our detention center isn't broken. I don't, I look at it like, why does it need fixing? So I can't support this. If we had issues and things like that, I'd be the first one to stand in line and say, "We need a change." I just don't think we need a change, and that's got nothing to do with Sheriff Bone. I think if he had the jail, he'd do a great job. I think the next sheriff or whoever comes in would do a great job. But I can't support it because I don't think we need a change. I think you heard tonight that we get, we have great results at our detention center, you know, we do a good job with it, and I don't see the need for a change, and that's, that's why I won't support this, and it has nothing to do with personnel or anything else, that's just the way I look at it. I don't think that, that it's broken, and I don't think it needs fixing, so I will not support this.
Other comments? Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Tucker.
For obvious reasons that have been stated tonight, and throughout the county, as the folks that I've spoken with, and once again, Sheriff and I, who I'm happy to say that I supported during this campaign, and worked hard, did not agree on this decision. So I removed myself from the personal side early on with him, and he knew where I stood. I'm under the concept, and I use this analogy with him, I don't think that the fox can guard the hen house. And I'll stick with that quote, I just truly believe in that. And then I had other citizens in the community that confirm, and then I heard what was said tonight, and I think that, well, I have not heard anyone up here say tonight that the commander, Cato Terrell, is doing a fabulous job, fabulous job. He was doing a good job on the Peggy, and he's been bumped up, promoted up to step in the field until we go through the process, and I've heard nothing but good things about him, and that didn't come from him tooting his own horn, that has come from the public and his boss. So I have to agree with Councilman Gardner on saying, if it's not broke, what are we fixing? What are we truly fixing? Let me give you some background on Sumter County. How many of you are, or did you know, that Lee and Sumter County Detention Center is a combined detention center? And when Sheriff Anthony Dennis took over down there, that wasn't because it was ran so great, they were in a tumbleweed fall, there was nothing good about it. I know the former administrator from the jail, and I personally know the sheriff. There was nothing good about that going on down there. And so it was time of crises, why they leaned on the sheriff to ask him to take it. And his first initial, his first initial thought and answer was no. And then, of course, council continued to talk to him and encourage him, and then he looked into some things and he changed his mind. And I'm not telling you that they're doing a bad job down there, because, first of all, I don't live down there, and I don't sit on that council, but I can tell you, our detention center up here is doing very well, and it's not a problem. So I'm not ready to take the helm from the captain that's running the ship and move it to a new captain, because there are these bright ideas of collaboration and synergy and all these big words we like to use to move forward. Because I will say, and Mr. Carpenter, you correct me, a lot of those things that the sheriff has presented as far as working through and with the detention center is open now to work with administration, where he can still do some of the things, a FEDO program, you know, he just doesn't have control, but he can still basically recruit from the detention center and still, you know, do other things as such as, you know, the transportation part and things of that nature. But I don't think even the previous sheriff has come up to you and asked you of any of those collaborations, am I wrong by stating that?
Mr. Tucker, the previous sheriff did not. Sheriff Bone has only been in office a little bit.
Right.
So he hasn't had a chance to do that, and I can't comment on what the law would say regarding his hiring employees versus mine, so I would defer that to him, on what he can do that I can't.
But what I'm asking is, the opportunity there, does the opportunity exist?
Certainly, I'm always gonna be open to that.
So with that being said, it's nothing personal to you, Sheriff, it's just where I stood several months ago when we first had our conversation, and I have not actively recruited or advised anyone to feel the way I feel, I just feel the way that I feel from my experiences and from my, from my information that I've received from constituents and citizens of Kershaw County. Thank you.
Other comments? I'm ready to call a vote, but I do have a short statement here. The point is, I've talked to federal and state judges, and they all greatly oppose sheriffs being in charge of the detention center, and we've heard twice now from the public defender, and also in the previous minutes, the last time this vote came up some years ago, the public defender, who looks out for the rights of the accused, are very strongly against that mixing of duties, not against the sheriff. And thanks to W P U B and the Chronicle, they both very faithfully captured her remarks, very seldom refer to you two gentlemen for authority, but they were very faithfully captured in my concern. So with that, I'm ready to call a vote. All in favor of Mr. Jones' motion, please signify by raising your hand. Mr. Jones, in favor, and all those opposing signify by raising your hand, and it's Mr. Connell, Mr. Bozard, Mr. Burns, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Snodgrass, and the motion fails. We move now to the next item on the new business, item number...
Mr. Chairman, one quick question to the administrator here. Mr. Carpenter, is there anything else you need from us to move forward to get the head of the detention center settled in and job closed?
My understanding, Mr. Tucker, now, is that with council's action, that I will proceed with the process of searching for and hiring an administrator.
Thank you, sir.
My understanding is that is the will of council.
Thank you, Sammy, good question. Okay, item number two on the new business is accommodations tax advisory committee reapportment. It's at tab E, you see Beth Ford, she is asked to be reinstated. Can we have a motion for Beth Ford?
So move.
Mr. Jones, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. Any discussion? By way of discussion only, there are two vacancies, if y'all could help me find out some more, to help people to fill those positions. With that, we move to a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, and Beth Ford is reappointed. We move to item number three, which is reappointments of three persons for the Clean Community Commission. We have Mr. Webb here, who's not being reappointed, but his term remains. Thanks for coming, Tom. The three names are Wanda Swan, Lena Schumake, and Dennis Outlaw. It's on the board there for you, and it's at tab F. I propose we move to a single vote, since this is a reappointment. All those, can we have a motion to reappoint those three fine citizens?
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of clarification.
Yeah.
I just recently heard from Lena Schumake, she's gonna be teaching at a new school this year, she was the chairperson of that committee, so it's a sad loss for us, but she will be able to continue on. I'll be bringing another applicant to this council at some point at the next meeting or thereafter.
Mary, shall we then remove Lena from the...
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're down to two, Wanda Swan, thank you, thank you very much, and Dennis Outlaw, and that is a sad loss. Can we have a motion for those two other remaining?
Show me.
Mr. Bozard, a second. Mr. Connell, thank you very much, Ben, that was a good short stop there. Any discussion? We'll tell you that Wanda Swan and Tom, and Judge Horace, and all those people have been meeting very much with our sheriff to talk about litter and grants, and we will soon see a proposal from them, and I thank them. Now, let's move to a vote, all those in favor to reappoint Wanda and Dennis Outlaw, please signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. We move next to the item number four, if you can, it's on the board. We have three vacancies in the library board, and we have our world award-winning librarian here tonight, thank you for coming. And I will move now through a series of nominations by person, there are four people competing. First, can we have a motion to appoint Annette Little?
I'll make that motion to appoint Ms. Annette Little.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
David, thank you very much. Any discussion about the appointment of Annette Little? Seeing there is none, let's move to a vote, all those in favor, so signify, and it's unanimous. The next person down the list is Johnny Cornegie the Younger. Tom Gardner, if you would like to make a motion?
I would move to appoint Johnny Cornegie to the board.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Snodgrass, a second. Very good. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, we move to a vote, all those in favor of Johnny Cornegie, so signify, and it's unanimous, Mary. And we now have, next one down the list is Tara Simmons, can we have a motion, Ben, perhaps?
Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion, it's actually Tana Simmons.
Tana, oh gosh, Tana, thank you. Tana Simmons, a second, please.
Second.
Second from Tom, thank you very much, sir. And with that, any discussion? Seeing there is none, we move to a vote, all those in favor, so signify, and I apologize to Tana. Thank you very much, it's unanimous, and that closes the slots that are available. With that, we move to the next item on the agenda, let me catch up with myself, which is item number five, a bid to renovate the main library conference room at tab H. Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce it?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have tonight in front of you, a bid has been received for renovating the main library conference room. This is the project that the friends of the library have approached the county to proceed with, they are funding this for it. The low bid has been received from MICA Contracting of Lexington. The council has asked to approve the awarding of the bid to MICA Contracting for $57,391.20.
Can you just talk about what the scope of work is, please?
It's merely renovating the conference room at the library itself.
No electricity, plumbing, tearing out, okay.
Just basically working on the...
Can we have a motion to approve the recommendation of the low bid, please?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the low bid.
A second?
Second.
From Mr. Snodgrass, thank you. Any discussion? I just say we got the best librarian in the world, and the best library, and it's an old facility, and I'm glad this is happening, and I watch her behave at Elgin and Bethune and elsewhere with the bookmobile, and it's a very vital part of our county, thank you. With that, Ben?
A quick point, maybe for the future, actually. I remember two-plus years ago, we had a small building that we're gonna build, and it was subject to Davis Bacon funds, and that required bidding from certain companies that tend to bid just way over anything you would expect to pay per square foot. Even though it's a low bid, I see $57,000 for a conference room, and it makes me wonder, what is the value? I'll support the low bid this time, but so that I can be more informed of maybe the rest of council in the future, I'm not looking for engineering drawings or anything, but I at least wanna know roughly how many square feet we'd be renovating, and are we using some high-end materials, or, you know, you can build a house for $57,000, it'd be a small one, but you could build one. So I just want a better understanding of return on investment whenever we're doing these kind of projects.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very good. Other comments? Very good, well, point taken, Ben, thank you. With that, we move to a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Mr. Snod, okay, it's unanimous, thank you very much, Mary, it passes unanimously. Move to the next item, which is a bid, item number six, to renovate Elgin one and two sewer pumps. It's at tab I, and it's on the board. Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this is a bid to replace, not to renovate.
Okay.
This is part of the Southern Loop Sewer Project, as you recall, the first step was to replace those pumps, the Elgin one and two, those are some of our larger pumps. We received two responses to the bid, the low bid side concepts of Lugoff, South Carolina, for $197,335. Staff recommends your approval.
Can we have a motion to approve the low bidder there, please?
Motion.
Second.
So move, and second.
Who's got the first?
I do.
You wanna argue? Okay, Mr. Snodgrass, and then seconded by Mr. Tucker, thank you. Let's move into a discussion, please, Mr. Snodgrass?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir.
I support the staff in this move, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. Ken, you don't see any issues with the fact that we have on the agenda says bid to renovate?
I think it comes under the definition, though, doesn't it? Part of a building, isn't it?
Um, well, it's inside the building, it's, yes, sir, I mean, they're in a building, yes, sir, it's the pumps themselves.
But is there a difference between replace and renovate?
Well, replace pumps or renovate, I think Mr. Carpenter's saying they're renovating a pump station.
Replacing the pumps.
In a pump station.
He said he's replacing the pumps.
Yes, sir, they're in a building.
He's putting words in his mouth.
Yeah, well, I think, I think he's got the amount of bid in here, and it's in the package, isn't that correct?
Yes, sir.
And saying that he's renovating pump stations by putting new pumps in it. I think it fits the definition, only, Mr. Jones, particularly because it's disclosed in the agenda package, the exact matter.
So you don't think the word renovate is different from the word replace?
Well, it's different.
Mr. Councilman Jones, that's my fault.
I can't hear you.
That's my fault.
That's okay.
I picked up renovate.
I'm not upset about it, I just want some clarification on it. You do an outstanding job, by the way, and you know I feel that way, so this has nothing to do with you. This is just, I want, the administrator, I think he reviews it, I think the chairman reviews it, and it has renovate, and we're saying we're going to replace, so I'm just asking the question.
Mr. Jones, but for, the agenda package contains the actual bid in the package, which I think supplied everybody, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And it says that there are two bids to replace, it does use the word replace, for sewer loop improvements. Clerk said she used the word renovate, but it says Elgin one, Elgin two pumps.
Okay.
Because I think the public in the council knows what the agenda item is.
I'm good, thank you, Mr. Ken.
Mr. Bozard, I'm gonna reinstate my motion if we need to.
I'm fine, I'm good.
Chairman, I think I'd like to thank you both for your English authority, and it's well-stated, and I accept responsibility for not having it reviewed thoroughly. But with that, I think we can move to a vote. I do have a question, is, a little later on, are you gonna be able to show us, Vic, in due time, how these, there's a progression of these at some point, and at some point, and these sewer pumps being replaced, and I wouldn't wanna do it tonight, but just, out of curiosity.
Absolutely, yes, sir. As we get into the fall, we'll be discussing the whole Southern Loop project and...
Oh, that's right, absolutely. Well, wonderful, thank you, way ahead of us, as usual. With that, let's move to a vote, all those in favor, so signify. Very good, it's unanimous and passes, thank you for that. I move to the next item, item number seven, which is cancellation of the second meetings in each of the next four months, 24 September, 22 October, 26 November, subject to a call session if necessary. Can we have a motion, Mr. Gardner?
So move.
A second?
Second.
For Mr. Bozard, discussion, Mr. Gardner, do you wanna lead us off?
Well, it just seems that, based on tonight's meeting, that we haven't had a meeting in a while, there's just not enough to substantiate or have the need, we can always call a meeting, so I think that it's appropriate that we cancel those meetings.
Very good. Any other discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman and members of county council, and all due respect to my colleague, and I do respect him, I absolutely disagree with this, and I think there, it seems like we're on a path to go to one meeting a month. July, August, September, October, November, that's almost a half a year that we've counseled a meeting, and, and, you know, I just, I just can't go along with that. I think there's plenty of business for us to address, and so I will be voting against it tonight.
I do need to clarify again, but thank you, Mr. Jones, good points.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DeBoz made it very clear that we need to be predictable, and where there is actually circumstances... is actually circumstances to cancel or to schedule, and a call meeting is very much in that, so thank you, Mr. DeBoz, for pointing that out. Uh, Mr. Bozard?
Yes, thank you. Knowing this was coming up, I was down at Hilton Head, the rest of them, last weekend, and, uh, in my classes, I had two on Saturday and I had one on Sunday, and I asked in my class, how many of the counties, and in one class was twenty counties representative out of forty-six in South Carolina, how many of them had one-a-month meetings? And out of that twenty, eight of them said they had one-a-month meetings. So, based on that, and in my second time I asked, um, hmm, we had, I think about everybody in the county, I mean, in the state was represented there, and that number come out to be about the same, about, about a forty-five percent. So, we're not the only county that's, as, uh, Mr. Jones mentioned, that's, uh, looking for once a month. I'm not saying I'm looking for, I mean, once, I'm not saying I'm looking for that, but we're not the only counties that's looking at it and doing it.
Uh, let me be clear about the motion. The motion is, in the, only through December, uh, and a call meeting could be, uh, brought it, brought back in. Mr. Gardner, is it your intent, perhaps, when you made the motion, that we have two a month and work sessions once we go into January through July and the budget season?
Uh, I will probably be bringing that motion that I made this past year again, that y'all so quickly voted down last time. But yes, uh, probably will, uh, will, will make a motion somewhat, whether that's relative now or not, to have two meetings through the first six months and one meeting for the last six.
Especially during the budget, okay?
Yeah, the budget, I think we need two meetings first half of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Bozard. Other comments?
Chairman?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't wanna belabor this, this is, I mean, but, I do wanna clarify, I know that in, in, in one-on-one conversations with several of you, I, I, I did say, ah, yeah, that's, that's, that's a, that's a good idea, but I was not aware that we were talking about doing it this year, so, just, just, cause in the spirit of always being somebody who, what I tell you behind closed doors is what I come out here and do, I just wanna make sure I clarify that. Um, I, I won't be, I won't be supporting this, um, because I feel like it's, it's important, a previous council before I was on it set the calendar, um, in December for this upcoming year, and that's what has been, uh, published to, 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 to the public, and I, I would prefer just to stick with that. Now, I'm more than welcome to have the conversation in, in December for changing up the schedule once we get into 2020, but I won't, I won't be supporting.
Thank you, sir.
These amendments.
Uh, other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Ben, please.
So as I hear about this tonight and think about it, there's probably some very limited or nominal cost savings, cause we have people here with overtime that love hearing us talk into the late hours. Um, I'm just trying to think through pros and cons. What's the process, again, for a call meeting? If you could explain that, Mr. County Attorney?
Chairman can call a call meeting or, or a majority of county council.
Twenty-four hours' notice.
We got twenty-four hours' notice.
And then, could you explain what the notice is that goes to the media and otherwise?
Well, Freedom of Information Act, you have to give twenty-four hours' notice and post the agenda. Um, as a practical matter, this county council typically, including the chairman, has given more notice in twenty-four hours. That's all you have to do in twenty-four hours, you have to post the agenda too, and send the agenda out to the media, twenty-four hours.
Other comments?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Jones?
So, what I'm hearing tonight, this is kind of the first, when I saw it on the agenda, cause I've talked to nobody about this, it seems to be the direction of this county council, that we're gonna go to one meeting a month, uh, that, well, we're doing it now, if y'all vote this in, you, we're, it's one meeting a month for the rest of this year, and that's what your intentions are for next year, is what I've heard.
What I thought I heard, Jimmy, if I can speak, is.
You can.
Only through December, that's what's before us.
I understand, but, did you not just talk about something about it in January when we come?
Well, what I said was, uh, that, that'll be addressed in December when we set the schedule, but it's my view, and I think I heard Mr. Gardner say, and I'm not gonna speak for him, that once we get into the January and budget cycle, we'll go to two meetings a month, plus two or one or two, and maybe sometimes three working sessions, until the budget's passed on the thirtieth of June. Now, that's not what's before us tonight, but we can discuss that in December.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Reminder that we don't set the calendar in January, we set it in December, the last meeting. Uh, you said that we would look at setting it for the next year in January, but it will be set in December.
That's what I said, I'm sorry. But thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, if people want some input, be ready to have that addressed in December's meeting.
Absolutely. Uh, other comments? I'm ready to call the question. All those in favor, uh, signify by raising your hand. Uh, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Conell, all those opposed, so signify. Mr. Jones and Mr. Snodgrass, the motion passes, and we will next meet, unless there's a call meeting, uh, in the second, the second Tuesday of September. Uh, with that, we move to item number eight, which is the administrator's recognition. Sir, Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, um, as we talk about our employees in, in some detail tonight, I wanna take a chance and take a moment to, um, recognize one of our employees, something which I'm gonna start doing as, uh, as the opportunity presents itself to, to me, to share it with you and this community, just the kind of people we have working for us. Um, Star, Star Medlin is an employee of our nine-one-one, um, office, and, uh, and you see that happy face carrying, uh, in front of her that recognition, I, I tell you what she did. Um, she saved someone's life, um, by administering and teaching them how to, to administer CPR over the phone until, um, someone could get there, and, uh, someone's with us today because she did the job that she did. And I just want this council to see the kind of people we have working. Star, thank you very much. I told her she didn't have to talk if she didn't want to.
I'll take the hug.
Thank you, Star.
Thank you very much.
That concludes.
Absolutely.
Mr. DeBoz? Uh, no, council briefings, uh, starting with you, David.
Yeah, uh, wanna thank everyone for coming here tonight, and, uh, we tackled some, some tough, some tough issues. I, I do wanna take some, a time to highlight a new business that's, that's happening in our, in our county. Um, those of you know, I, I take time to, to recognize what I call District Five Pride Award, and, uh, that's, that's a recognition of, of small business and entrepreneurs who are taking interest in, uh, putting private dollars back into some commercial buildings and in residential buildings and rehabbing them, and, uh, particularly along the Highway One North Corridor, uh, which is, uh, certainly in, in need of that, and so, always grateful for those, and so I wanna recognize, it's called the, uh, there's a new, there's a new sewing and sewing, uh, material shop in town called SC Material Girls, uh, at thirteen oh nine Jefferson Davis Highway. Uh, not only do they have, uh, fabric and, and things, uh, of that nature, but their main thing is really having classes in the evenings where they bring groups in, they teach them, and, and they do different projects, and so they, they, they took a building that was vacant, yeah, along the Highway One North Corridor, and, uh, it's, it's, it's beautiful. And, uh, so I just wanted to recognize them and thank them, uh, for, uh, for putting, putting dollars back into Kershaw County. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. Uh, a couple of quick things. Um, I heard the word, uh, setting presidents up here used several times, even from our administrator, uh, when we were discussing the benefits for the employees, but I watch , uh, presidents being set, Mr. Chairman, by you, and, um, I just need to, I just need to highlight it because, uh, I plan on, uh, using every legal, uh, Robin's Rules of Order and our own policies if it happens again. Um, I've never seen discussion, call for the vote, and then we reopen and pressure our colleagues to change their vote, and then call for the question. That is not the way we rule up here and the way that we act or conduct, um, and that makes me guard my vote that much more precious, what I wanna do now, because if you guys are not getting the, the votes you want, then you don't take it. You discuss it, discuss it, discuss it, until you change minds and hearts, and that ain't what you're supposed to do up here. You're supposed to let everyone vote on their own conscience and heart.
Correct.
And that did not happen tonight. I will not end on a sour note, because I don't wake up on a sour note. Mr. Cato, thank you again for what you're doing. Keep plugging, and, uh, head up, shoulders back, and move full speed ahead. Um, Mr. Sheriff Lebone, you do the same. Keep doing what you're doing, and, uh, moving this county forward in a good direction, and just know, um, tonight I was not on your side, but I'm always on your side, and that's, that's not just lip service, and you know that. I wanna state too that, um, we're, uh, doing a lot of good things in the cog. We had a cog meeting, uh, just last night, um, down at Santee Lynch's, and, um, there is, um, some efforts being made to, uh, partner with SC Thrive and other groups to, um, give better services to our region. Um, I will be bringing more information, uh, about that and, um, other opportunities, uh, that we're doing down there, uh, within the next, uh, month or so, but, um, I also want to state too that, uh, this past June, I was, um, elected to the second vice, uh, chairman of that, uh, board of that cog. That concludes my report.
Uh, Mr. Gardner?
Uh, just before it's been mentioned, but, uh, again, our ponytail softball team, congratulations on them. They represented not only Kershaw County, but the state of South Carolina very well. They won their first two games, uh, weren't quite as lucky in the last two, but, uh, first team, I think, ever from Kershaw County girls softball to make it to the World Series, and I think we're going to honor them at next meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bozard?
Thank you, sir. I did not vote for the park down here by the river, but I go down about every Saturday, and, uh, I talk with some of the people, and I was very much surprised at how many people do use that. One man told me that they like to go down and fish because he lives in town and he doesn't have a place on the river to go, up on the lake, but he does now, and that's good. That's good to know that people are using it. And I saw a lot of people down there, a man and his son was out walking around and, um, checking everything out, but before I go any further, I want you to tell, uh, Shane that that place down there is very clean, and I'm glad and see how they're taking care of it, Mr. Carpenter, because it is very clean, they're keeping it very clean, and the people using it. I didn't see any trash anywhere else around, but, uh, I'm happy to know that, um, people are using it, they're using the facility, it's not being overrun now, by no means, I don't, I don't mean that, but they're down there using it, and that's, that's what we want them to see them do. This past Wednesday, I made a trip to Washington for a conference up there, it was with North Carolina, South Carolina, and Tennessee, and, um, the conference was on Thursday, and I came back Friday morning. The conference was, um, very helpful in a lot of ways to me, because there's some projects that I'm trying to get done, and I got some information there that, uh, just might help get, get it, uh, accomplished, but the speaker there was outstanding. Sonny Perdue, who is the Secretary of Agriculture, he's also the past governor of Georgia, uh, that is one outstanding man, and he's an outstanding speaker. Mick Mulvaney came on, and he didn't have a subject, he opened it up to anything anybody in the room wanted, and there was over two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred of us in the room, and he shouldn't have done that, because I think maybe he might have got more than he wanted, but, uh, the question of transportation studies came up, and he spent some time with it, and asking our, answering our questions and so forth, but he asked me one that I couldn't answer, but, uh, I am going to try to take care of that Monday or Tuesday when I get back. Been looking for money to take care of these transportation studies in Kershaw County, we've already, the study is complete, we're just trying to find money, and that's what I was doing, trying to find money. I haven't, he didn't promise me anything, but he did say that he would try to help any way he could. Mr., I miss it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Conell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, would just like to thank Lena Schumake for her service on the Clean Community Commission in its, uh, I guess renewed inception year. Um, they did a great deal of work. If you recall, the road cleanup led to hundreds and hundreds, it's kinda sad to say, but hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, bags of trash that we, uh, cleaned up, and the county at its entry points looked a lot better, renewed a sense of pride in the community that I think we need for those communal spaces and common areas, um, so we don't have so much litter, and, uh, also wanted to say, you know, Sheriff Lebone, obviously I support you, um, love coming and cooking for the sheriff's department, uh, contributed financially to your campaign, believe you in many, many ways, but, uh, we just happen to disagree on this particular issue, and, um, I think the only thing we didn't get you this year in your budget request was that fingerprint scanner we were talking about. I hope you get it next year, and whatever else you need to effectively carry out the law enforcement duties in Kershaw County. I'm also very proud of the athletes that competed representing Kershaw County in softball. Um, it's a tough thing to be a student athlete, I mean, it's really hard, uh, between the required testing you have from the state of South Carolina and the federal government, and then try to balance practice on top of that, and then any other extracurriculars you do, it, it's really tough, so, those and so many other student athletes will be engaging next week in what it is to be a student athlete, as school's about to start. I, I just hope and pray that all the kids will have a great year, be able to work hard, be safe, and, um, and study well. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. I have just a few things I wanna mention. One, I'd just like to give a, take a moment to just say that a friend of mine, Rick Aaron, the chairman knows and friend of the chairmen's as well, passed away last Thursday, and, uh, thoughts and prayers go to the family, and Sheriff appreciate all you've done, where that's concerned as well, too. Um, he'll surely be missed. Uh, Mr. Bozard, I haven't seen those people you're talking about, but I'm gonna be looking, and, uh, just haven't seen them. And, uh, also, I'd like to say, Mr. Tucker, thank you for standing up tonight on what...
I stand up every night.
No, you, well, you can't tell you, sometimes, but anyway, bottom line, I mean, speaking out, I, I too, Mr. Chairman, I, I have never seen what happened tonight, happened before on county council. It was obvious that there were, that you were not gonna close it out till you made sure you had the four votes. We had already, and, and I was sitting there praying nobody would get weakening, but it happened, and, uh, bottom line is, you heard that there were four votes for it, and you were relentless in making sure, and, and I'm gonna tell you, that's not in the policy, sir. I don't, I, I don't think you have that right to do that, and, uh, I, I'm not, personally, as one council member, I'm not gonna stand for it, cause if we're gonna close that discussion, call the question, take the motion, take the second, and then absolutely pound, pound, and ground, ground, until we get our four, four votes, that is not the way this county council works. That was unheard of. You've been here fourteen, fifteen years, I've been here thirteen years. That doesn't make us any experts, but I hope, Mr. Tucker, that you and I are not, are not the only ones that feel that way, but, um, so anyway, now, on another note, I also think that when this county council takes trips to Hilton Head, that they should, and there may be tonight, but there hasn't been, that there will be a report by the chairman or some member of county council. been, that there will be a report by the chairman or some member of county council.
I'll get you one.
But it should, it's, it's usually always been done by the, uh, the chairman. I, I'd just like to see that and, and, you know, have a recap as to what happened and what went on because I know there's a lot of good information there and I know you guys put forth time and going to the classes and everything. And, uh, also I'm going to leave on a very good note. I'm like Mr. Tucker. Sheriff, the Association of Counties, counties stated, because I called and talked to Mr. Robert Benfield, that there was less liability with the sheriff running the jail than the county. So I'll leave it at that. Mr. Chairman and members of county council, thank you so much for the time. I really enjoyed this and I, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. Uh, I go down to the Watery River every Saturday morning with my fly rod and I wish I could report I was using the right lure, but I meet a, a number of people back down there and this, this thing will only grow. I think we'll hear shortly from our, uh, administrator about what the progress is of creating the, a better environment down there and going to Phase One to include a park ranger. So I assure you, it is used very often. Uh, about the, the trip down to Hilton Head, the hour is late, but I will summarize a couple of them. Uh, most of the counties that I talked to, in fact, I didn't talk to any county that didn't go to a, one a month after they got the budget done. Now, I, I don't have the same sampling size, it wasn't, it wasn't, uh, scientific, but that's the way it went down. So that's where we are today. Uh, that was one of the major discussion items. Another one was, uh, the continuing issue with compensation, uh, as you heard tonight and my great concern about risk on that regard and this ought to be a budgetary item and I would hope Mr. Carpenter will set that up for us in the new budget cycle. Uh, the recession is over. That is the good news and we perhaps can look at compensation and pension, but we don't know. And we don't know what the, the budget's going to do and we don't know what moreover, what the legislators are going to do to us. So we'll find out, but I think with a booming economy and full employment and local sales tax and the LGF might be more favorable. Uh, those are the major issues for me. Reinforcement on ethics and discussions with Councilman Snodgrass, our newest councilman, about the classes he went to were more than just fundamental and it was interesting to hear his perspective and I thank you for going, those of you that went down and took time away from your family or with your family, I think you all profited. And a more formal report, Mr. Jones, since you asked for one, will, will be forthcoming.
Thank you.
Um, we broke ground today. Uh, many of you were there at the, Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Conell were there. Um, and what we did is we have turned a corner on a new pathway to the American Revolution in the South. A pathway to telling our story and that of our ancestors. It is a great painful story about liberty. Uh, it's an amazing story. So, about a year from now, we'll start seeing that thing and when the city of Camden gets through building it, thanks to the efforts of Vic Carpenter, uh, and, and others like him, we will see a great event. Secondly, we will break ground on Thursday and I hope most of you can go there because Gene Wise, my predecessor, uh, led us on a joint use campus that this council put into motion with the CCTC funding and much of the, again, the work that Vic Carpenter did and along with other partners, we will break, we will cut the ribbon on Thursday and I hope all of you can make it. It is a great day for economic development. Uh, a little later on, on that same point, we'll have an executive session on two contractual matters regarding economic development. There will not be a vote, it'll be an update. Lastly, on parliamentarian items, I'm not perfect and I, and I, and if I offend people, I apologize, but generally I'd like to ask also and reciprocal that when you bring in such a complex item that essentially opens the budget again with hundreds of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars, that impacts every employee we have, that we not see charts for the first time less than an hour before this meeting, that we not see the motion, and I have no idea what the motion was before we come in here, when it was 17 or was it 82 or was it 86? That's a complex issue fundamentally impacting our liabilities and the taxpayers and I wanted, I was, and I was quite pointed on that as a parliamentarian issue. There's another parliamentarian issue, that when you vote on the minutes three times and on a policy three times and more than once for each successive year to this point, the men up here take responsibility for what they voted on and, and that's why there was such passion up here. Passion on three who are here and then the passion by those of us who inherit this issue. And, uh, another six months to look at it and take it apart is why I held for what I did. And as to the calling, the question on the parliamentarian, I'll have to go back and look, but I called the question and then Mr. Jones asked if Mr. Bozart had a further comment and I remember that. So, uh, if I, if I'm wrong on that, if I, it will certainly will and I hope you will come back to me, Mr. Tucker, and give me further instructions. I'm always welcome to that sort of instruction. All right. Well, with that, Mr. Administrator, would you take it from here?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, first of all, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, the information that you received was information that I had been compiling and put together. I did not myself have it until it was received by all members of council at the same time.
Right.
This is not, uh, something that was a deliberate effort. It was my efforts just did not bear fruit until that time, just before the council met itself. It didn't change the basic information that was already in the packet, it just added more information to it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
You did a great job. It's just, it's just a complex topic. Go ahead, please, sir.
Um, I'm, I'm going to give council a brief update on a number of projects. Um, you can see, uh, on the screen of the projects, um, I won't necessarily read them to you, but essentially the projects that we have, we have a number of them. Uh, the Mason Lane EMS station, as you can see, we're ready to start landscaping it, um, starting, uh, this week. Uh, we've done that. Um, EMS should be, uh, moving into that station, uh, we hope sometime in, uh, early September. Governor's Hill Road, uh, that's part of the, uh, project that we have, Economic Development Projects, to, uh, get the Governor's Hill site ready for industry. Uh, we started work on 3,300 square feet of gravel road, uh, in it. Uh, October 26th is the date for completion, as you see. Uh, the entrance sign will be visible from the interstate, so people understand that there is an industrial park there as well. Uh, the Heritage Point wastewater line, the engineers are done with it. Uh, information been submitted to DEHEC. Uh, we hope that it should be, uh, approved by them in mid-September. Uh, the disturbed land that, uh, took to get to there, uh, should be, uh, completed as well as we've already started seeding it. Uh, this building, the modifications to the government center, uh, tomorrow, we begin modifications to this chamber for safety upgrades. Uh, the safety upgrades will essentially, uh, be, uh, putting a, uh, a barrier, a half wall, not, not a wall, but a half wall between, uh, council. Um, and it's unfortunate we have to do that, uh, but anyone who has, uh, read, uh, news stories in recent years is aware that public bodies are a risk, um, as people have, uh, unfortunately, uh, brought their anger, um, into, uh, into meetings and sessions. So, uh, we will be doing other work as well, uh, for that. Um, we, uh, finished the executive session room, uh, so a little bit of paint still needed. And then the parking lot, uh, we're under the final design for that and review for the parking lot, uh, which will make it safer because the current parking lot with access and egress onto Broad Street is dangerous. It's too narrow of a entrance way. Um, people pull out blindly into the street, so we'll be looking to relocate the entrance to this building into a side road, either Walnut Street or Little Street or both, um, in a fashion that again, makes it safe for our citizens to enter and exit, uh, this facility. Um, our CCTC landscaping is, uh, we have, uh, the final design is underway. Uh, it'll include, um, the rail to trail section on that project as well as incorporating the new, um, the old ATEC, new WTC landscaping. Um, our public notification sign in Mesa, as you know, at the airport, we have our first public notification sign. This will be our second. The idea being ultimately, um, as we work on county facilities, you put these access signs where citizens can see and get information from severe weather alerts, um, amber alerts, um, silver alerts, uh, information about county council meetings and workshops coming up. Uh, people complain frequently to us that they just don't know and so we're trying even further to get the information out into the communities that we serve. Uh, the Armory on, uh, DeKalb Street, uh, we've issued RFQs to secure an architect engineer to begin evaluating what we need to do to the exterior of that building and then an RFQ, uh, the roof itself. Uh, these are funding that were approved by the General Assembly of South Carolina, $500,000 in the current budget. So we'll be able to make some significant changes to the exterior and in, and to the interior of that building as well. Uh, we begun the process to get an architect to design our new fire station in Cassett. Um, the reason we need to do that is because the old architect that designed the building in Blaney is no longer in business and we cannot find copies of the plans, so we will have to redesign the building, though it'll be as similar to the Blaney one as we can make it. Uh, though we did try to use existing plans, that just was not possible to happen, but we have acquired the land or in the process of acquiring the land in Cassett, so we can move on that. Important to everyone is our KC West ball fields. Uh, we have been assured by the Armstrong Construction, they'll be completed Friday of this week. Uh, we are now working on the specs for lighting of those remaining four fields. The Recreation Commission has approved us moving forward with lighting of it and, uh, we're optimistic at this point. We've not received bids yet because we're not put out for it, but we're optimistic that, uh, if the bids would come in, in a range we think they should, that, uh, we can put up funding for, uh, put up all four lights, uh, on those fields. All four fields would be lit. The Watery River Park, uh, we opened the bids today at 3:00. Um, we can, uh, the bids have not been finalized yet, but based on the bids we received, uh, sex, Phase One, um, can be completed for the funding the council has allocated. Uh, Phase One, again, includes, um, the canoe and kayak launch, it includes, uh, parking, it includes a walking trail and a nature trail in it. So it'll begin us moving forward to the Phase One, therefore should be completed. Uh, we would anticipate sometime by spring of, uh, next year, uh, that Phase One will be open, uh, for that park. And at that point, it'll be open seven days a week, 24/7. Yes, sir.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, sir.
Is any thing in your plans to that walking trail down inside the creek to make that a little wider, especially up at the top, there's too much overhanging limbs and trees?
Yes, sir. The current trail was staff-created. Um, this will be a designed trail. Uh, it, one will be natural, uh, which will be, be the trail, then there'll be a walking path that'll be a, a hard surface, uh, for people to go and walk laps or whatever as well. So, uh, people can go and walk the trail around the river, which will be a natural one and, uh, quieter, softer, and then the walking trail itself, uh, and the interior. Um, with the splash pad, I, I put up the schedule for you to see. Uh, again, the city of Camden and Kershaw County are jointly sharing this construction project. Um, the, uh, date, we start in August. Um, we've already begun the scheduling of the master planning with it. Uh, we would anticipate construction starting in December and, uh, next summer, Memorial Day, when the pool opens, it'll open as well. If you've been by the airport recently, the construction has been underway for some time on the drainage project. Uh, we anticipate it being completed by mid-November. And, uh, the Elgin Park, uh, again, the General Assembly approved funding for the creation of the park in Elgin, our first park in Elgin. Uh, the final design is underway. Uh, bidding, bidding will be, um, received in fall and we expect completion by June of 2020 for that project as well. And I believe that those are all the projects I had to report on for you. Also wanted to give you an update on the airport. Um, the FBO for the airport, um, Camden Jet Center, uh, many years our FBO had notified us that they will be, uh, terminating their lease in September of this year. Uh, staff have been working to ensure that there is a, uh, transition that is smooth and is seamless, so that citizens and aviators notice no difference between the county and the, uh, FBO running it. Um, uh, council will be provided with the information and a decision will be made by this council whether to go out for bids for a new FBO or for the county to run it itself. But in the interim, um, staff is, um, will be, will have stepped in and you'll notice no difference in the running of it as well. And, uh, also just needed to notify council, the bids for the, um, pump stations were, um, very important tonight. Uh, we had to back, a few weeks ago, issued an emergency purchase order for $19,000 to keep the current pumps running. Uh, so we are, um, again, they've, they're past their lifespan and, uh, we couldn't have gone sooner with approving the purchase of those, uh, those two pumps. And, uh, last thing, as Mr. Gardner and others pointed out, the ponytails, at their request, we'll be recognizing them in September. Um, we had seen if they, uh, wished to be recognized tonight, but at their request, they asked to be delayed until, um, September. And, uh, members of council, that is my report.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Administrator. Yes, sir.
I need to ask you one question.
Go ahead, Ms. Bozart.
Um, I was asked down, I think it was last Saturday, um, is there a rumor going around there's anything in the process for us to take over Good Old State Park?
Yes, sir.
No?
Yes, sir. There's, eh, when the Rec Commission, um, did their, um, their, their priority list, one of their pri, one of the items they mentioned was the county assuming Good Old State Park. Um, so they thought that would be, be something good for the future, but that was, all it was, was a future project to consider. The county itself has never entered into any serious discussions, uh, with the state parks. Now, the state park has told us that they would not be unhappy if the county would take over Good Old. Um, but the county has not come to them and said that we will take over Good Old State Park. Yes, sir.
Okay, so right now we just looking at it?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I can't say that at some point this council wouldn't decide to do it, but this is nothing that staff is seriously pursuing. Yes, sir.
Thank you. First I've heard.
Okay, uh, Mr. Carpenter, thank you for, uh, that update on the projects. Do you, can you, for the ones that may want this electronically, please send it out?
Absolutely.
I'm one of them, so we can share with the citizens.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Um, at this time, I think, Mr. DeBoz, you have a, um, a legal, um, executive session for us. Will you state that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Acting as Chairman.
Whatever.
It's my understanding that, um, we need an executive session to discuss two contractual matters.
Okay. We've heard from our county attorney that we need an executive session for two contractual matters.
Along the economic development, I believe.
Along the economic development of, uh, operations. Is there a motion?
Let's go make the motion.
Motion's made by Mr. Bozart. Is there a second?
Second, second.
Second by Mr. Gardner. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Or raise your hand, I'm sorry. Raise your hand. Okay. Any nays? All right. It's unanimous, Ms. Mary, and what time is it?
We're all making mistakes.
Okay, 7:57. Let's go in our big conference room right back and we won't be long.
Somebody.
Oh, so, uh, before I recognize that motion, uh, there was, um, executive session and no action needed nor taken. Uh, motion to adjourn again?
Somebody.
All right. Uh, motion made by Councilman Gardner, second by Councilman Conell. Uh, any further discussion? Any further, no. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand. It is unanimous, Ms. Mary.